House Board Meeting of September seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Vice Chairman Barry, would you please be the
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Valerie, would you please read the statement of public notice?
The Little Falls Township Planning Board Meeting of Thursday, September seventh, two thousand twenty-three is called to order. Please take notice that adequate notice of this meeting was provided in accordance with NJSA ten colon four dash eight and NJSA ten colon four dash ten as follows. The notice of the meeting was promptly posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building located at two twenty-five Main Street, Little Falls, New Jersey, on March third, two thousand twenty-three. A copy of the notice was sent via email to the North Jersey Herald and News and was filed in the office of the township clerk on said date. Please note that this meeting is being taped. Therefore, we ask that you speak loud and clear into the microphones.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Barry?
Here.
Mr. Gata?
Here.
Mr. Karaj?
Here.
Mr. Luke Damianno?
Here.
Mr. Talgo?
Yeah.
Mayor Damianno?
Here.
Councilman Scobah? Mr. Seaver?
Here.
Mr. Derek Damianno? Mr. Postus? Ms. Athie? Mr. Wade?
Here.
Mr. Breakley Doro?
Here.
Mr. Coldlars?
Here.
Ms. Siobhan?
Yeah.
Mr. Kilpatrick?
Here. Thank you. Council President Scobah, are there any comments from the council?
Chairman, at our last meeting, we had some residents attend our council meeting pertaining to some of the issues that are going to come come before the planning board tonight. Cindy Alexander explained that she was here to speak on ordinance fourteen sixty-nine, noting that she is a client of the various cannabis retailers. She further explained that she had has a severely broken back and marijuana helps her function, helping to control the pain. She informed that a government-issued ID is required when you walk through the front door and there are no products on display inside. She pointed out that the marijuana is safe and that it is not laced with fentanyl or anything dangerous, as is provided to the customer in a sealed container. She expressed her support for the ordinance and for Little Falls to move forward with this. There was a record Rebecca Pennico explained that she is in attendance to speak on ordinance fourteen sixty-eight, as some of the council members hope to receive more input from residents. She expressed her support for the ordinance, noting that more than sixty-seven percent of the township residences residences voted in favor of the recreation cannabis as a ballot question in two thousand twenty, according to the election data from the state county clerk. She further pointed out that four thousand five hundred two residents voted yes, as opposed to two thousand one fifty-seven who voted no. She recognized that the question on allowing cannabis dispensary in town is slightly different question, but she said the council can assume that residents would want more access to marijuana based on this data. She also noted that this is an opportunity to boast tax revenue and we need businesses that remain in town for a long time and bring in more rate. She voiced concern regarding ordinance fourteen sixty-nine, specifically related relating to having a dispensary on Route forty-six, explaining that this may cause more traffic on the highway when traffic is already not the best. She also hoped the dispensary could be more accessible to residents in town. There was one other resident. Damaris Rodriguez expressed her opposition to cannabis ordinance, explaining that she has young children and she believes that this will negatively impact younger people, giving them access to illegal drugs. She also voiced voice concern of her location. That is it, Chairman.
Thank you, Council President Scobah. Those comments were specifically in reference to ordinance fourteen sixty-nine?
Correct.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval of the minutes for July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second? Please pull the board.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Gata?
Yes.
Mr. Luke Damianno?
Yes.
Mr. Talgo?
Yes.
Mayor Damianno?
Yes.
Councilman Scobah?
Yes.
Ms. Athie?
Yes.
Mr. Kilpatrick?
Chairman, Chairman votes yes, the resolution is approved. I'm sorry, the minister approved. Memorializing resolutions, the manor at Little Falls LLC and SNS at Main Street LLC. May I have a motion to approve the resolution? May I have a second?
Second.
Please pull the board.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Gata?
Yes.
Mr. Luke Damianno?
Yes.
Mr. Talgo?
Yes.
Mayor Damianno?
Yes.
Councilman Scobah?
Yes.
Mr. Kilpatrick?
Chairman votes yes, the resolution is approved. Applications, first application is ordinance fourteen sixty-nine. Counselor, can you give the board some understanding of what we are charged with accomplishing tonight?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, so the process is whenever the governing body wants to adopt a land use ordinance, it must be referred to the planning board for what we call a consistency determination with the master plan. In order to have a valid ordinance, that's the process you have to file follow. So the township council, they introduce the ordinance. By statute, under the municipal land use law, it's to be referred to the planning board and it has been referred to the planning board. Once it gets to the planning board, the planning board has a period of thirty-five days within which to review it and offer recommendations back to the mayor and council in terms of a consistency determination whether or not the ordinance as proposed is consistent with the master plan. If the if the planning board finds that they they want some changes, they could recommend changes, but it's up to the it's up to the mayor and council whether or not they want to accept them. But basically, tonight is a presentation on this ordinance and all the board is charged with doing. The board is not taking a position that the ordinance should be approved or not approved, or they're in favor of it or not in favor of it. It's just whether or not this ordinance is consistent with the township master plan.
Thank you very much. Let's begin the application for township of Little Falls. Ordinance fourteen sixteen eighty. You have to address.
Right in center.
Oh.
Sure.
Good evening.
Ms. Siobhan, please raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give before this board? It's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
So for the record, just obviously, we know who you are, but for the record, tell us your name, spell your last name.
Certainly. My first name is Sanogida, S A N Y O G I D A. My last name is Chavain, C H A V A N. I work with H two M Architects, H two M Associates, and we are and I'm appointed as the township planner for the year twenty twenty-three.
And you are a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey?
Licensed in the state of New Jersey, as well as have the national AICP certification. And I've been practicing planning for over twenty-five years.
And your license is valid as you appear before the board tonight?
That is correct.
Glad, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Counselor.
So.
You can begin.
I prepared a memo which I shared with the board, I think, yesterday. And basically, as our council explained, our role here is to exactly examine if it is consistent with the master plan. So what we basically identified the changes between the existing ordinance and the proposed ordinance and basically analyzed the effects and conducted a consistency determination. So as you know, that duly licensed cannabis retailers has been added as a conditional use in the ordinance and there are other standards that have been there as a part of section two eighty-eighty-one of the ordinance, which continues to remain. So this use would be permitted as long as it is in compliance with all the conditions, as it is for the other duly licensed cannabis growers or processors. So and so on and so forth. That's mentioned in the section of the ordinance. So it just permits retail cannabis, but it's conditionally permitted. So it has the same standards like cannabis consumption will not is prohibited indoors and outdoors and it should not be closer than five hundred from a similar established five hundred feet from similar establishment or thousand feet from any school building. So they have the same standards that that continue to remain. And we looked at the master plan to see if it is consistent. And it is consistent with the twenty twenty-three master plan reexam report, which basically reiterated the goals from the twenty thirteen master plan reexam and replaced some of them are some of those goals that were identified in the prior version. So I can quickly go through what it furthers and the comprehensive goal in the twenty twenty-three master plan reexam report, which is page two and all of you were present when I did a presentation and it was adopted a few months ago. So it it forwards quote number one, which is encourage the promotion of practical and appropriate development controls in order to promote the consist and be consistent with the goals of the MLUL, which advocates the protection of the general health, safety, and general welfare. So we do have standards in the ordinance that will continue to uphold that goal. And number six, which is to maintain and enhance a thriving local economy that encourages the provision of cost-effective public services and in order to improve the quality of life. So it also helps in maintaining and thriving the local economy. And then third is upgrade, preserve, and increase the economic and aesthetic vitality of the existing commercial areas, namely Route forty-six, while being sensitive to adjacent and existing uses. It continues to do that. And most specific, excuse me, in the land use goal, it talks about comprehensively revising and updating the township zoning regulations, not only to make them consistent with the master plan, but also to get rid of any loopholes, ambiguities, and unnecessary regulations. So with this, it's very clear cut and it forwards that goal of the master plan. And finally, we also had set forth economic development goals. And in this case, it is to seek stable, high-quality ratables that also reflect favorably upon the image and identity of the township. So we do have ordinance in place where you do not display any cannabis goods. You do not advertise it. So it's it's my professional opinion that whatever is being proposed forwards the goal of the master. And that is it.
Does anyone have any questions of our planner? Go ahead, Chairman.
Five hundred feet distance between stores. You come up with five hundred feet.
That's an existing. It's that's not for discussion right now. It's already been in existence. Yes. So it's been. You just have to, your your determination is only for the portion where if you look at the ordinance and if you look at page first of the ordinance, class five can class five cannabis retailer license are specifically prohibited. That's being permitted cannabis retailer license that's being permitted in that zone district. So that's the only change. That is, the rest of the standards have already been in place.
I might be able to clarify the five hundred feet. Isn't that a state regulation?
It's federal. It's federal. I think if I'm, isn't it federal? I'm going to ask our council if you know.
I don't know if it's federal.
I read it under state, but it's possible it's a federal.
It probably is under the state then. I'm not sure on the top of my head.
So I could also help clarify. It is currently reached five hundred feet from a similar class license. And the current ordinance, as presented before this board, would only permit currently one class five license. So it's impossible that a class five license be within five hundred feet of another class five license currently, since only one class five license is being permitted. All the other class licenses, one, two, three, four, and six, which are the processing license, the shipping license, the the grow license, all of the other licenses. What that says is that one of those operations could not be within five hundred feet of one of those of the similar type of operation.
Basically, there can't be another retail store.
Within five hundred feet of where this current retail store would be, but right now that's an impossibility because the ordinance only permits one class five license in town, again, as proposed. That doesn't mean that down the road it couldn't be changed to allow more. That'd be a change to a zoning ordinance.
Or it would be a licensing if you have to go to the council?
Correct. Yeah. And the application have to come back before this board also.
Right. The mayor's right. So there are different stages, but eventually, Mr. Gata, an applicant would have to appear before the board. And if they conform to all the requirements of the conditional use ordinance, it would be for a site plan approval. If they don't conform, then they would have to get a D three variance, which is similar to the variance that the board's going to hear tonight on the application before tonight. Although it's the one tonight, obviously, is not a retail dispensary.
And from a land use point of view, I just would like to add what these kind of standards do is to avoid proliferation of one type of a use. So it's the licensing is one aspect. The second aspect is protects proliferation of the same kind of use.
Is there any other questions of the board?
I do have a question about the same item H, but in relation to the the thousand feet from any school building. I'm not certain, but I did some reading separate of this document and found that that continues to read on past school building to include parks, bus stops, houses of worship. Is that accurate or is what I read accurate or?
Where did you read that?
School buildings.
In the actual ordinance?
Yes, in the in the in the requirements from the state.
I don't know on the top of my head, unfortunately, but the ordinance reads the way it does.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I do. I have another question. In the comprehensive, so when you reflected on the master plan and the consistency and how it aligns with the comprehensive goals of the two thousand twenty-three master examination report, you listed a couple of goals that support the the master plan. Goal number six, where improves the quality of life, maintains and enhances the thriving local economy that encourages the provision of more cost-effective public services such as shared municipal services in order to improve the quality of life. As much as I think this is a wonderful goal, I don't necessarily understand how this ordinance applies in this situation. Could you explain that? Maybe just give me a little context.
Sure. The way of B two district is a B two district is a commercial district, right? What what this goal basically talks about, you're thriving the local economy. You will you will be providing ratables to the town. And it already has the infrastructure, like it has it has it has a frontage along a highway, so on and so forth. So it's not that you're creating something that is will be in one of your residential neighborhoods. It's going to be on a highway. It it forwards the goal. Now, you know, you one needs to look at this. When you look at consistency with the master plan, the way the MLUL reads, the way the statute reads, is it's supposed to forward it. So it's supposed to be within the policy framework. We typically don't go by word word by word. You know, what does that word mean? You look at it overall in a context, and it's my professional opinion. In an overall context, it follows this score.
Chairman, I don't know if I don't like the response that that Carmen had received. I don't necessarily understand the response. However, I my question was more specific to if the thousand feet also applies to parks, bus stops, and houses of worship. If that could just be noted, that I don't know. I necessarily received an answer.
Oh, well, I'm saying that I'm reading from the ordinance and it says that the way the ordinance reads presently, which is the existing ordinance, that no cannabis-related business shall be closer than thousand feet from any school building. So that's what the ordinance, existing ordinance reads.
And whether we know now or we don't know now, we're still required to follow state just the laws, regulations. So if it's more than a thousand, then we can't go beyond a thousand.
No, no, of course. I understand that. I guess by when I went up, the item that I read or the piece that I read, I was asking if it was accurate, whether or not it should include school buses and parks and churches.
Okay. I have a copy of our ordinance and and it does, and it just at the end of it, at the end of the it's Q, section Q. I might as well read it. Within the B two district, no establishments duly licensed by the state of New Jersey for cannabis as defined above shall be located closer than five hundred feet from a similar establishment. Additionally, no establishments duly licensed by the state of New Jersey for cannabis as defined above shall be located closer than one thousand feet from any school building, period. So that that's what our ordinance.
That's what our ordinance says.
I can help answer this, I think, in the sense that every municipality has different rules and regulations as the distance as it relates to various types of locations, whether it be schools. For example, Booton says five hundred feet from any park and a thousand feet from any school. So parks, schools, bus stops, if the town wants those to be included for the particular zone that it's in, can include whatever distances they would like. Then, of course, applicants can always seek relief if they wanted to. In our B two district here in Little Falls, and this was presented before this board, it hit three years ago when it was originally legalized in the state, the council and this board had indicated that a thousand feet from any school was the only portion of a distance requirement that we required from any type of one of the location as you, you know, kind of indicated. And five hundred feet from another similar type of business. That was the only thing that the Little Falls ordinance includes.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the board have a question? May I have a motion to open up the meeting to the public? Second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The meeting is open to the public. Anyone wishing to address the board, please approach the president right now. No one approaching the microphone? I closed the meeting to the public. Is there any further discussion from the board? May I have a motion?
Chairman, if the board wants to make a favorable motion, it would be that ordinance number fourteen sixty-nine is consistent with the township master plan.
Very good. May I have a?
I'll make that motion.
I have a question. Would you like me to relay a memo to the governing body or will it be by resolution?
I'm sorry, Sam. I do not understand the question. You already submitted a memo.
No, no, Mr. Chairman, if I typically, when the board takes action like this, we would do a resolution approving the vote and the resolution would contain any comments of the board members or just the finding that the board found it to be consistent, ordinance fourteen sixty-nine, consistent with the master plan. My recommendation would be that you authorize me to do the resolution. In the interim, if the if the governing body is going to have a second reading before our next meeting, we can so advise them in writing that the board, assuming, I know we're midstream, but assuming the the vote follows through, that we find it consistent, we could advise them in writing that that's what that event took place and will be memorialized in the resolution at our next meeting.
To be clear, our counselor is writing a resolution.
If that's the board's prerogative, I'd be happy to do it.
Thank you. Thank you for your offer, though, Sam. Appreciate it.
On the motion, I'll second.
Thank you. Please pull the board.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Gata?
Yes.
Mr. Karaj?
Yes.
Mr. Luke Damianno?
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Talgo?
Yes.
Mayor Damianno?
Yes.
Councilman Scobah?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Ms. Athie?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah.
Mr. Kilpatrick?
Chairman votes yes, the application is approved. Planning board finds that ordinance number fourteen, you know, scene number fourteen sixty-nine is consistent with the guidance of the master plan. Thank you. We're going to hear from you a lot tonight. Before we start, I would just like to thank Sam and the H two M team, the members of the planning board subcommittee team, which has put a lot of time into what you're going to hear tonight. Thank you.
So good evening, everyone.
Sam, can you move the mic a little bit closer to?
Is this better? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about that. Good evening, everyone. This is a presentation. We have started the master plan maybe a month, month, six weeks ago. And we formed a subcommittee and this is a kickoff meeting presentation to inform the board and keep everyone abreast of what this process entails and where we are at in this process. So next slide, please. Next slide, please.
What's wrong with this? Is it on?
Yeah.
Mayor is on his way.
Actually. So.
It's good.
This is good?
Fine.
Okay. So what is a master plan? As you all know, but indulge me as I repeat myself. It's a guiding document for a multidisciplinary planning and investment in the township for the next ten years. So it provides a vision and will also provide recommendations that will facilitate land use policy changes and ordinance changes. And it provides a framework, policy framework as per the municipal land use law to you're required to prepare the master plan every ten years and that and update your ordinances accordingly. And the master plan elements that we will be, the municipal land use law has set forth certain standards like goals and objectives and land use plan are basic mandatory elements. However, there is a lot of interconnection between and interrelationship between different elements like land use determines transportation and circulation pattern and vice versa. Land use is also determine economic development and key of and at the key of all given current climate is sustainability and resiliency. So we are proposing to examine the two mandatory goals and objectives and land use and the complementary circulation plan element, economic development, sustainability, and open space plan. And what we are proposing to do is set forth recommendations and strategies. And these strategies will, our goal is to not have a shelf document, but have a living document that will actually have implementable strategies for the next ten years or so. And in that, what we would do for every element, have a strategy, identify who the implementing party is, whether it's the governing body or whether it's the planning board, and then have priorities set, like if it's a short term, one to three years, medium, three to five, and long term, five plus years. And we provide a five plus years. And we provide a checklist, so the township's planning board keeps tabs on all these recommendations, whether they are being, uh, implemented or where we are in that. So we typically try to provide recommendations and strategies, not just in language, but also in, um, a matrix. Next slide, please. So basically, overall, uh, will be, you know, ad- we are administering the project. And in order to do this full-fledged, uh, master plan, we will be analyzing the existing conditions. So reviewing, uh, existing studies, all the, uh, board applications, demographic analysis and trends as, you know, the population has been changing. Um, and then most importantly, this is a plan for the township and for its people. So we have included a community engagement strategy. So we'll be interviewing, um, maybe township department heads. We'll be having three public workshops and, um, sometimes people may not be comfortable in a public forum, but we need to reach out to them. So we also have an online survey, which we call the public input, uh, dot com. We've used it successfully in many master plans, uh, that, uh, that this, my company has done. Um, and, uh, we'll be reaching, uh, having a project website and everything under one roof and with public input dot com. And then the next phase would be developing the comprehensive plan. And as I mentioned earlier, we'll be talking about the goals and objectives, the land use plan, circulation, economic development, sustainability and open space. Although there will be discrete elements by itself, um, we don't want to have prepared them in a silo. We've never done this in any of our past, uh, comprehensive plans and will, uh, have in very clear interrelationship between them. So the recommendations will tie in with one another. And finally, we will, uh, present the plan, uh, for adoption. Uh, next slide, please. So role of the planning board, so we'll be seeking input from the planning board. We have members of the planning board, uh, who are a part of the master plan subcommittee. Um, the consultant team will provide updates throughout the process and then will hold, will have, like I mentioned, a three, um, community engagements, which would be to get, um, the residents of the town to provide their input. And then, uh, up to that, we'll have a planning board meeting to present and gather comments on the draft master plan. And then finally, present the planning board, um, the final master plan for adoption. So that's, um, next slide, please. So in terms of schedule, next slide, please. Um, we started this process sometime in, um, mid-July, I would say. And, um, the, we, uh, started, uh, the plan review and you, you know, the next step would be a field visit, identifying stakeholders. We have developed a survey through the public input, uh, website and it was, you know, a lot of input from the subcommittee members and, um, we'll be lu- um, uploading that tomorrow morning and then, uh, hoped, uh, we also have this first meeting to keep you all abreast with what's going on. And the first public hearing is, uh, not, uh, public hearing, I'm sorry. The first community engagement is going to be on September nineteenth, uh, at the civic center. Um, then followed by two others in October and November. And then after that, uh, you know, during that period of like maybe three or four months, we'll have the public input website to get uh, input from all the residents. It's very easy, um, a survey. And then sometime in December, we hope to have a council meeting to present it to the governing body members to get their, uh, input. And, uh, we hope to have a draft ready in February to present to the planning board. And then sometime, um, in March, we hope to adopt, um, the master plan. So that's, that's our goal. We want to, um, keep it on schedule. Uh, I've done this in other towns, have had a very good experience to follow this schedule and successfully present the plan. Um, so it's a realistic, um, uh, schedule. So, next slide, please. So in terms of, uh, existing condition analysis, like I said, we'll be reviewing all the documents, um, to just, uh, we'll be looking at the regional studies, um, as well, uh, that's required by the municipal land use law. And then we'll do a field visit, um, to just, um, uh, record conditions on, uh, site. Um, next slide, please. So with the community engagement, as I mentioned, we'll have three workshops. We have this online project information, um, site. We have three community workshops. Um, so next slide, please. So what are the next steps? So first, we'll launch the public outreach campaign, as I've mentioned. Uh, we hope to launch it on September eighth. Uh, there'll be three community workshops. We'll have a town, a township council meeting. We'll be interviewing stakeholders like department heads, this, that and the other, um, and a field visit. And finally have the plan ready. So this is it. Thank you for your time and I'm ready to take questions if any.
Anyone have any question?
Sorry, when was the first, uh, meeting workshop?
Uh, it's going to be two weeks from, two weeks from now, uh, September nineteenth.
And they're gonna be held?
Um, the next would be October twenty-third, um, I believe. And then the third one is going to be on, um, November twenty-ninth.
Have we decided on a location yet?
Civic, uh, civic center.
Three of them will be at the civic.
Yes, and we will be, um, I think, uh, we prepared a flyer for advertisement. We've sent it to the town. Um, it's, um, going to go, uh, it's going to be mailed to the residents through the, the tax bill. I think, I, I don't know, James, was that sent last week or something, the tax bill, do you know? Cause I, I be, uh, but any, anyway, so it's, we're doing a lot of advertisement through that. So we're actually mailing the flyers and, uh, we'll also be putting it on the website tomorrow. So, um, the, um, township website, uh, that will have links to both the survey as well as the flyer.
So someone can go to the Little Falls town website?
Absolutely.
And they'll, they'll see this as a pop-up window or something where they can bring up the survey or?
That is correct.
Is there more information on it?
There, there will be a, it's a very user-friendly website. Um, uh, it has links to all the prior documents. It will have, uh, links to, like I said, the community workshop. Ev- all the information will be there. There, we've also provided a QR code, so you can actually even, uh, log in through your phones and, uh, you know, it's, uh, it's a pretty cool, um, uh, tool that, uh, we've used it elsewhere. So we're pretty comfortable with it and confident that it will be very effective in Little Falls as well.
I mean, thank you. Any questions of our planner? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
All right, um, we are now ready uh, to hear the applications for Leaf Enterprises LLC. Does anybody see Mr. Vettering? Thank you.
Counselor, um, I guess the mayor and myself have to be excused on this.
Yes, you're, yourselves have to recuse yourselves. Thank you.
Right. So, so Val, just for the record, so this is, since this is a D three variance, council president Scoba, Mayor D'Amiano have to step down. And for voting purposes, everybody here can participate with the, obviously with the exception of council president and the mayor. Everybody can participate, but only seven board members can vote.
Okay.
Mayor, council president. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. John Vettering entering my appearance on behalf of the applicant this evening, Leaf Enterprises LLC. So the, um, Leaf Enterprises is the tenant located at six hundred Route forty-six West, which is block two oh three, lot one. Uh, we know it for the last forty-something years. We booked a family trip there in eighty-five, so yeah, probably is there before that. But let's call it forty-something year, probably forty-five years, they operated there. Um, obviously, you know, what's happened with the, uh, the travel business, Liberty Travels have closed out the state. And, you know, they're left with rather small buildings. And this is, um, you know, no exception. It's not even fourteen hundred square feet. And it's been vacant for some time in disrepair. Uh, the applicant is proposing to renovate the building substantially. We're gonna talk about that. Um, also included on this block and lot are two other buildings. Um, we didn't create this. This was created long ago. We did try to find by way of an Oprah request how it existed. It may predate the zoning code. But there are three, three buildings there. The enterprise rental car is the only operating business that's there. There's a former tattoo shop on the westerlymost portion of the property and the Liberty Travel Building, which is on the easterlymost portion. So the property is located in the B two zone and the B two zone, as we've been hearing a lot about, it includes and permits as a conditional use, um, you know, the various classes of cannabis. In this case, this is a class two license, processing, manufacturing license, which is already compliant with the B two zone as a conditional use. And we'll talk about the conditions. Um, in this case, we had a couple of precursors that we had to go through. So there was an application process that started a long time ago with the state of New Jersey to even get here. The applicant had to secure the real estate by way of lease to get there. They had to go through substantial background checks and substantial compliance with the state of New Jersey to even get here. And then that brought us to the township. And the township has an ordinance that speaks to filing for a business license. And the applicant put the fee up and submitted the application, the business license. Uh, we're happy to report on August twenty-ninth, the township of Little Falls accepted Leaf Enterprises as the, uh, the first licensee for a class two operator in the township of Little Falls. A copy of the approval letter was submitted with the package, so you should have it. It's a simple letter dated August twenty-ninth, signed by Mr. Cuccia as the business administrator. In addition, of course, we always have notice as a requirement. So we obtained the two hundred foot list notice from Little Falls because of the proximity to Woodland Park. We obtained a list from Woodland Park. And then we also notified the state of New Jersey DOT, as it's on a state road, and notified the county planning board, as we just do by routine and the, uh, and the township as well. And I think Mr. Greg Leodora will agree that, uh, we've adequately noticed for this matter, so that this board has jurisdiction for the matter to be.
Chairman, I agree with the comments made by Mr. Vettering.
Thank you. So with those, with those two precursors, you know, we're here tonight on an application, which when we initially looked at this, we thought this was going to be a planning board application. Um, as we're going through all of the requirements of the conditional use, and there's lots of other things in this conditional use that have absolutely nothing to do with cannabis, but have to do about putting balloons on cars and having hoods of cars up because largely the B two zone is filled with lots of car dealerships. And there's, there are a lot of items in there, particularly, um, in the B two zone and the conditional use about, uh, automotive uses and billboards, where none of those. But as it relates to, um, the use of cannabis, in this case of class two, one of the main things that, um, we worked very hard to do was to comply with any of the operational comments. And one of them was to create a rear entrance, so that the cannabis can be done and access, the loading to be accessed through the rear of the building. Um, you know, the, the original plan that we had, we thought it was impossible to do because this building sits right up against the property in Woodland Park that, um, is owned by Bob Chisule, where they park the Lexus cars. That application came before this board years ago. But we were able to have the structural engineer look at the building and come up with a way to create a loading area and create an alcove, and we'll talk about that tonight, so that all of the loading will not be done. Nothing will come through the front door, nothing will be done on the westerly or easterly side, and everything will come through the rear and we'll show that you have that in your, um, in your packet. But there were some other very technical D three variances, um, and we're gonna go through those that, um, we didn't anticipate. One of them was, um, something as simple as fencing. And while this site is adequately fenced, no one will be able to see anything, the fence that's there is not owned by the applicant and it's so close, I don't know if we could even put a fence. So as your planner, um, mentioned in her report, it would be nearly impossible to do that, although we've addressed the issue. There's adequate fencing and we're gonna show pictures to show that there's, you know, no way anyone would see anything there. There's, there's quite a barrier between this building and where it's located topographically. And the closest residence would be Wedgewood Knolls in Woodland Park, which is probably, you know, three hundred feet away. But, um, technically it's a D variance, and that's what brings us before here, this board tonight, as a board of adjustment and not as a planning board, seeking the, the D three variance being the variance of a conditional use. In addition, this is a very peculiar site. It's a very long, thin site. And there are certain things that we would never be able to comply with. Like, if we're supposed to have a fifty-foot setback, we would have, you couldn't build anything. So the, there are pre-existing non-conformities that are noted on the plan for a bunch of items because of the peculiarity of the site, which gives rise to some of these, you know, and our planner's gonna talk about this, some of the C one variances, which I think this fits very perfectly into the, these are, this is an exceptionally narrow lot. It has, um, you know, very interesting topography. You start, you know, you start down here on the western side and you come up here and then you go back down. And Mr. Cobular has some great comments to make some improvements to the circulation there that we're completely on board with. Um, in addition, there are some other, uh, technical C variances that we're going to review. But I think the most important thing of the evening tonight, you know, we've all heard applications about setbacks and access and garbage and snow removal. But what I really want the board to understand is, is the operation. Let's face it, this is the first, um, application to try the new ordinance with respect to, uh, this class two operator. And a class two operator is very different than, you know, what we think. We all have images of plants growing out of the windows and cultivation happening and smells and vibration and noise. And there's none of that here. There's no cultivation happening here. There's no extraction happening here. There's no odor happening here. There's no noise happening here. And, um, you know, we have with us tonight, we, um, you know, two of the principals. Uh, Jason March, I had the opportunity to serve on the Little Falls Ed Foundation board with, and it's been my pleasure to do so. And his, um, his partner, who I've gotten to know as well, Mike Inzatari, and they're gonna be our first witnesses so that they can give you an overview of what will be happening in the business, hours of operation, employees, odors, fumes, how the process works, deliveries. And then that will be followed by Joe Mealy, who's the professional engineer, who's gonna answer all of Mr. Cobular's questions, answer the board questions, followed by Matt Flynn, who's appeared before this board, speak in the area of planning. So with that said, I'd like to bring up both Jason and Mike and get them sworn in and let the board hear what they have to say. Gentlemen?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give before this board? Is it gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Okay.
Okay. Let's start with the gentleman to the left. Tell us your name, spell your last name and give us your business address.
Mike Inzatari, last name is I N Z I T A R I. And I'm the COO and co-founder of Leaf Enterprises.
That's, uh, Jason March, M A R C H, just like the month. I am the chief executive officer and co-founder of Leaf Enterprises. And we're operating from six hundred Route forty-six West.
Correct. Okay, so my, uh, for my introduction, I think maybe the best way to start is we submitted, um, slide, I think it's A one oh five. It was in your pocket. And that is the floor plan. I think it might be helpful to show the board the floor plan. As I mentioned, this is probably smaller than most houses in our township. This is a thirteen hundred and forty-five square foot, one story block building. Um, and the, the inside is going to be completely changed, the outside is going to be completely renovated. We're gonna talk about all of the landscaping and other, uh, paving improvements. But in terms of the operation, I'd like the guys to just walk through the floor plan and in doing so, talk about the business and some of the questions that were asked by the planners. So with that said, and with the, uh, the, uh, the.
Yeah, um, so I'll, I'll kick this off. Um, and before we get into any details about the operation, um, first of all, I just wanted to thank you all for this opportunity, uh, to present to you and, uh, to run this business and bring me to Little Falls. Uh, some of you may know, I am a resident here in the town, so I care very deeply about Little Falls and how well the township does. My son is in school number two. Um, you know, we have no intention of going, um, anywhere. And personally, I think a business like ours is perfect for a small and quiet community like Little Falls because of the name. Like Little Falls because of the nature of our business, it is a completely silent operation. It is um, manufacturing but quiet, it is not retail, so we're not attracting any visitors into the town. We are not impacting traffic, uh, in fact, we prefer people didn't know that we were there. And that's, that's really the way we will keep it. Uh, the only people that will be visiting our site will be other vendors that might be dropping off inputs that we need to make. Uh, our products, uh, outside of that. You know, nobody's allowed uh, on the premises, not with manufacturing plant like that. Uh, in summation, what we do is we create a pharmaceutical grade cannabis powder. That enables consumers to experience an exact precise dose every single time. Uh, that they can mix into just about anything you can imagine, yogurt, soda. Um, cereal, you can bake a cake with it, and so there's a lot of flexibility. Uh, to a product like this that is not existing on the market yet. Um, it, it is very safe, uh, we don't use any volatile chemicals or anything like that. Uh, all of our ingredients are completely natural, uh, the business will produce no waste. Uh, we will not have any plants on the premises, um, in fact, our main input. Will come in the form of liters of cannabis oil, which is just a large uh, liter of uh, THC.
I'll interject because the guys laughed at me and I said, is there fifty-five gallon drums of this stuff that they pulled over laughing at me for my ignorance of the industry? Like that would be worth a pound.
But two million dollars.
Idea, these are not fifty-five gallon drums that are coming in, they're on big fifty-three foot trailers, I'm giving idea of what, what it is that's coming in and then how you're. Manipulating what's coming in and then turning it into your finished product.
Sure, um, so at a high level, just try to imagine somebody pulling up in a car. Um, from a company that does extraction and cultivation of cannabis, so they would grow the flower. They would pull the liquid from the flower, they would put it into a one-liter bottle, then somebody would drive it. To our facility, they would enter through the back door and hand us this one liter bottle. That one liter bottle is enough cannabis oil to supply us for an entire month's worth of production. Um, what we do is we take that oil and we combine it with a proprietary compound. Uh, that we license from a partner uh, that exists down in Florida. And we mix the two together, uh, the reason we mixed the two together is because cannabis oil by nature is not. Um, hydrophilic, and hydrophilic meaning it's not water soluble, you know, oil and water don't mix. Once you add the compound that we use to the oil, it is now uh, immediately water soluble and thus the body is able to ingest it in fifteen minutes or less. Uh, so it makes the product fast acting, uh, if you will. Um, so once those two liquids are mixed, we then take a proprietary powder. That we use that acts more or less like a sponge and place it on top of the liquid and it just absorbs the liquid. Liquid disappears, now it's inside of the powder. That's it, so I oversimplified the process, but that's essentially what we're going to be doing. Um, which is what I just described, combining two proprietary deliveries, you know, day coming and outgoing, say on a weekly basis. On a weekly basis, I would be surprised if we had more than four to five deliveries on a weekly basis.
How's the distribution work?
What's that?
Distribution, to have your product. And how do you get it out there?
Yeah, so in the beginning, um, you know, we're going to start out slowly, uh, obviously, we're not going to be in every dispensary that's in the state. So there are so few dispensaries for us to deliver to right now, uh, in the beginning. What we're going to do is probably he and I will do deliveries ourselves to um, most dispensaries. Yes, yes, we are able to do that and it's within the CRC guidelines, it's fully above board. Um, another good reason we want to do that is to make that personal connection with the dispensaries so that they see us, not just some delivery person bringing them. Uh, product, um, so that is how we will start once.
March, I'm sorry, can I just ask you a question?
Sure.
When you talk about deliveries, you're only allowed to deliver. To retail, licensed retail dispensaries, correct? You can't deliver it to somebody's home.
Correct, that is, that is a big no-no.
So that's the other storefront dispensary or uh. Deliver it like home deliveries are also considered dispensary, so companies that set up themselves as, as a home delivery service, that's considered a dispensary, we're allowed to deliver to that as well.
Okay, ultimately, the nature of our business, it is non-consumer based, it's just, it's not what we do, we don't want any part of that. Um, like I said, it's a silent operation, we don't want to see retail customers, uh, that's for the dispensaries. Um, so four to five deliveries a week, um, if you can just imagine that, there's literally no impact uh, to traffic. Nobody will even notice when people come and go.
Um, just to clarify too, out of those deliveries, I'd say maybe one of those a week, probably one every other week is a cannabis product, with that cannabis oil. Potentially even less, most other deliveries would be our, our other excipient ingredients and or.
Where do you predict yourself five years down the road, you're going to have a need for a tractor trailer?
No, not a need for a tractor trailer, but five. Yeah, I'll, I'll start out, uh, uh, five years down the road, um, you know, God willing, will be a lot bigger. Um, so I imagine we would probably need a larger facility, uh, hopefully somewhere within. Uh, the boundaries of Little Falls, uh, so hopefully five years from now, we can open up the zoning a little bit more. Um, I also imagine that we will be in at least two more states. Uh, outside of uh, New Jersey, potentially Massachusetts and New York, where we have extensive connections to uh, get the product into retail dispensaries there as well. So uh, you know, the, this project is beginning, you know. We definitely have plans uh, to quickly expand into other states.
And I think, uh, so just to clarify and to add to that as well too.
You have to speak more.
So wi- with the, the nature and the footprint of our product and what we can produce, uh, the, the facility here in Little Falls is actually pretty sufficient to serve. The statewide market of New Jersey, um, so we do have that kind of sufficient space and supply in order to do that. Um, as Jason mentioned though, right, as we do grow and expand, even if we do go out of state. Um, we'd have to license ourselves to a state licensed operator in another state, right, with current federal regulation. So just wanted to clarify that.
And like, well, you have the more of the science back, might just speak a little bit about the, the odor, because that is, that is part of the, of the conditional use, how the, the. The extraction is done somewhere else, and therefore there, there are no uses.
Yeah, so as, as Jason mentioned, we will have no biomass, no flower, no plants, um, will come into the, into the facility here. We acquire our starting material really is that, is that oil, it's already pre-extracted from another cultivator and or processor. We don't have any plans to do that extraction on site or have the ability to do that on site at this point. Um, so with that, that, that oil being already extracted. And the way we utilize our process, um, it's really just a blending and mixing, using high shear granulation, there is no really uh, fumes or, or VOC produced from what you have inside of your facility.
And what, let me think about the machinery that you need, the mixers.
Yeah, so the, the large, the two largest pieces of equipment we would have, uh, basically a granulator, more high shear mixer, it's about the size of a small bedroom dresser. Uh, not too big, it's put on you. It's not identified as a piece of equipment here in this production areas, at least I'm on the A zero zero one here, um, but it is a, it's a, again, about the size of a bedroom dresser would fit, you know, against one of these walls here. Um, I believe it was on another diagram down, I'm not sure if we have that one in here, um, but again, that, that is probably one of the largest others. The other piece of equipment is a filler, basically a sachet filler, uh, something that would fill, yeah. So actually our card granulator is this year, this letter L, that's indicated, that's one of our mixers, our blender. And our filler here, I believe was indicated by J, yeah, that's our packaging filler, and that's mainly for our, our powder production, so. Um, kind of like a sugar packet or like a ready to mix beverage packet, like you have like an emergency, something like that. We basically fill those sachet with those powder, and those are the two pieces of equipment, the two largest pieces of equipment that we would have.
Okay, in case maybe people walk through the floor plan or Michael wants to just walk through. Sure, Chuck, what's, what's the other separate questions uh, for the site? Um, the uh, the oil that you were speaking of, uh, that contains no odor, there's no, I, I, not just a, an odor of. Cannabis, but any odor.
Yeah, I mean, it, it will contain a slight odor, there's, without a doubt, it will definitely contain a slight odor to it. Um, it would not be considered like a VOC or a fume, um, but it would contain an odor, like almost like a candle in, in a way. Exactly, yes.
Because we've been in so many labs and we've smelled so many different kinds of oils, you would literally have to go within. Half a foot and put your nose towards that bottle in order to smell the odor coming out of. The open bottle, that's right, if you step back two feet away.
The nature of order, you just set up an order, like save the building.
No, it does not, it would not, yeah. Uh, so here, and, and sorry, any further, um, and I could take us through the floor plan as well too here, um. Stand by the mic, uh, so we do have our front entrance, as you'd see located here on more the eastern, uh, uh, I guess this is the. Coming over south side, the south facing side of the building, uh, but that would be our, our main entrance for employees. Uh, for any types of visitors, as Jason mentioned, if we had a vendor visit or the New Jersey CRC. Uh, so as we would get audited frequently by the CRC or have visits, um, they'd end, everyone would enter and have access control. Oh, the Cannabis Regulatory Commission, so the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Commission or the New Jersey CRC. Um, that is who we are state regulated by, uh, who will give us our operating license as well, so we will also have periodic audits. Uh, from the CRC, we'll have to comply with all their rules and regulations.
Who does the audit?
Who does the audit? Uh, it's one of the CRC inspectors, um, so it's a certified inspector that, that's commissioned by the CRC. Uh, so our, our front administration office area, uh, will be uh, right there, will contain a few desks, uh. And also connect to kind of our employee lounge area, the whole easterly side of that building is mainly administration. Uh, as well as kind of some of our janitorial restrooms that you see. The whole west side of the building would be our production facility area with our vault. Uh, located near the, the back north side, I mean, you can also see our exterior alcove is, is designated here with our rear facing door. Um, so as, as Mr. Vettary mentioned earlier, um, we addressed some of that structural issue in that rear entrance. Uh, by creating an exterior alcove in the rear of the property with a rear facing door, that's where any cannabis related product delivery and or. Um, supply, uh, distribution would, would go through and go out of. Uh, so you can see we have a.
Oh, we have a question.
Yes, sorry.
Not to interrupt you, uh, I guess the wall finish for your product to be locked up at night so that no robberies could take place.
Correct.
Can be stolen.
Uh, so it's, it, it's for two purposes mainly, it's for controlled access for employees and anyone working as well, right? But based on the New Jersey CRC rules, we have to put any type of cannabis product, whether it's our raw material or our finished product. Uh, within the vault, so our, our finished product will be stored there as well as uh, our inventory on hand that we would bring in as starting material.
Uh, yes, what kind of security are you going to have? Somebody's not going to be in the building all night.
No, uh, so um, we do have a, a pretty extensive security plan and layout, uh, that is available, I. Not positive we had that diagram, but it was submitted, uh, so.
I don't think they wanted it submitted because it was some confidential information about where they're, uh, correct, yeah.
Got it, uh, so pretty much every square foot of the inside of that building is covered by a camera. Um, that camera is connected and can be viewed by the New Jersey CRC as well, um, as well as the exterior of the facility. Uh, so they can all literally be viewed uh, almost twenty-four seven by the New Jersey CRC, we are monitored sometimes by that. Um, they're also reported on a twenty-four seven basis, and then we do have access controls for the building. Uh, every entrance is access controlled as well as our production area from our anteroom is, is access controlled.
Are any of the uh, items that you're working with flammable?
Uh, no, not flammable, not volatile flammable or anything like that, no, and it would not remain lit on fire.
Well, you said they smell like a candle.
Correct, yeah.
If, if the Little Falls Police Department wanted to have cameras hooked up. By your building or to their department, would that be possible?
It should be, yes, I, I do believe other municipalities do that, um, other cannabis locations, so I, I do believe either they could set their own. I'm not sure if they could tap into the existing feed that we have, um, but we'd be open for that, absolutely.
We, I don't have a report from. The police department, so I don't know, thank you for clarifying.
What are your hours of operation and, and how many employees do you expect to have?
Yeah, typical hours of operation would probably be a nine to five operation, uh, so it. Mostly, right, maybe eight to four, nine to six, uh, depending, right, on, on what, but typical business hours of operation.
Monday, Friday or seven?
Monday to Friday would be most likely, yes, uh. I don't envision, we're, we're trying to, to keep and balance our work life as well too, um, and, and with the nature of what we have, again, we're not serving the public. So we don't need to be open seven days a week and we can produce pretty efficiently. Where we only would need to have a, a nine to five, Monday through Friday operation. A number of employees in the facility is about five or less, um, we don't have the, the need to exceed that. Uh, any other employees that we have listed are typically field-based for, for sales, uh, and.
The employees, do they need to meet special requirements, they have to be vetted?
Uh, yes, so e- every employee of a cannabis company will need to be uh, vetted, background checked and badged um, by the New Jersey CRC. Uh, so currently Jason and I have that badging uh, and background check already completed uh, through the New Jersey CRC. But any employees that we hire would have to have that as well too. Uh, I believe it's eighteen, but it may be twenty-one, there's definitely an age requirement. I am not certain if it's eighteen or twenty-one in the state of New Jersey, but absolutely there is an age requirement, yes.
Whatever the requirement is, you have to do.
Correct.
Any other questions for the board?
What is the size of that, uh, because I, I don't see it on my drawings here, um, the, the exterior alcove, what are the dimensions of that?
Oh, I believe it is.
Or I'm sorry, I'm asking the wrong people, my fault.
No, it's not on that one.
The, the side of the exterior.
And I, okay, let's say I could take a good estimated guess, but he'll give you a, a certain answer.
Thank you.
Uh, there's one more thing I'd like to add about security, uh, the New Jersey CRC Cannabis Regulatory Commission has already reviewed our security plan. And their uh, response was, we don't see anything wrong with it. So they've already taken a look.
In, in your operation, not just with security, not just employees, in every aspect will imply that you're as successful.
Hundred percent.
Any other questions?
You get inspected by the CRC?
Yes, and, yes, and sometimes they don't tell you when they come, you just need to be ready.
So they, they will inspect us on a frequency basis, um, but they can also do uh, ad hoc.
Do you operate any other facilities in the state?
No, it's not allowed, I asked the CRC if we, through our facility, could we operate a satellite office, the answer was emphatic, no.
You'd have to apply for a second license.
What if it was in the same township?
The answer is no, still no. I, that is, I asked them if it was in Little Falls, could we do it, and they said, no. No satellite office.
Well.
Close that one and move to a larger facility.
You could shift your life.
Sure, sure, you could shift.
You could shift, shift your.
We wouldn't be able to hold two uh, facilities.
Come back on that five-year plan. Any other questions?
Thanks, true. So in terms of your shipments, do you have tracking information such that? You know where it's going? So if the CRC wants to come in, they can look at your records and say, this shipment got shipped to this location, they can confirm that it was. Sent, it was received, can you just talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so uh, the New Jersey CRC operates what they call a seed to sale system, um, I believe it's under a system and software called Metric, M E T R C. Uh, so that is completely tracked everything from seed to sale through all the verticals of the cannabis uh, operations in the state. Uh, so everything from cultivation through consumer distribution is tracked uh, through that system. So basically for us, as we receive material, we'll have batch and lot numbers that we will log into our system. As we utilize that product and create our own finished product goods, um, it will each have its own batch and lot number. Um, all of that will be analytically tested as well too by a third-party uh, testing company. Um, once we obtain that C of A or certificate of analysis from that testing company, we are then allowed to release that product to the market. And again, that would be tracked by lot and batch number as well.
Can you tell me what CRC stands for? I have, I have got my guess, but.
It's Cannabis Regulatory Commission.
Very, thank you. All right, thank you, any other additional questions? Counselor, we find ourselves in a.
I have a question.
Oh, saying, go ahead.
I have a question, um, so I, I'm, I'm maybe I didn't um, hear you, um, so if, so I apologize, but. Um, how, what, when do you expect the delivery and number of times during the week with the operation?
And so the deliveries, uh, we expect under a handful of deliveries a week, um, the actual, most of it would be more excipient material, supply material that we would need. Even PPE equipment, things like hairnets, gloves, um, the cannabis itself would probably be bi-weekly that we would receive cannabis material. Uh, so we would consume about a kilogram or about a li- uh, a liter every two to three weeks. Um, and again, that could be literally a liter jar of oil, um. And again, that could be literally a liter jar of oil. So and that, that's about every two to three week delivery for us.
And do you know what time during the day you'd be coming?
Uh, not for certain, but again, during business operations, it would be accepted, yes.
Are you leasing this building or you're buying?
We are leasing.
Okay. And the owner has no problems with the changes and?
Yeah, we, we used to make the consent form.
Cameron, you wanna shake your head that you agree? Ever as the owner? Uh, counselor, we, we have, this is a unique presentation. Where I don't think we've heard the operating of CEOs, CFOs make a presentation. Do I open this meeting up to the public?
Cameron, what I would suggest is. With the exception of appears one individual that I can see, I think everybody else in the room is connected to the applicant. So I would recommend that the board just proceed with all the witnesses, then you can open it up to the public for one.
Very good. And, and that's what you do. Mr. Vetter, you're, you're gonna somehow tie this into the planner report and engineering short, right?
Right up next is, uh, thank you guys. Great job.
Thank you.
Uh, our next witness is Joe Mealy from Mid-Atlantic Engineering. Joe is going to testify in the area of professional engineering.
Really, please raise your right hand. You swear from the testimony you're about to give before this board is gonna be the truth, all truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
For the record, just tell us your name and spell your last name and then give us your business address.
Surely Joseph Melee, M E L E. With the firm Mid-Atlantic Engineering Partners located at the twenty-six Washington Street in Morristown, New Jersey.
Correct, Joe. He would give the board the benefit of your professional and educational experience.
Surely, uh, I'm licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, also a professional planner and professional land surveyor. Uh, in good standing in this state and in other states as well. Practicing engineering for over thirty years and testified well over a hundred times throughout the state.
Correct. I offer Joe as a professional in the area of.
Thank you.
Do we ask if the licenses are?
Licenses are current, we can say.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. Excellent.
Okay, so a lot of time in this application, Joe, so uh, I'd like you to give an overview of this unique site. And yet we're going to be doing, there's lots of recommendations that were made by Mr. Poplar. It makes significant improvements to the site. As you all pass by it often, it's very tired and tremendously uh. Air deprivation took the entire site. Speaking of it, we didn't, we didn't speak much about the changes that are proposed, the elevations of the building, which will include. You know, it's fashionable gray colors, new trim, uh, taking off all of the stickers and panels that are all over every single window. And I'm gonna talk about stuff as well, but I'll give you the overview and then make sure you're good on points in this report.
And we'll finish with the two review letters or actually the, the engineering review letter and planning review letter, uh, very thorough. So thank you, everyone. The site, I'll go through the existing conditions of the site and then get into the design elements of that. Uh, site address is six forty, Route forty-six. Uh, we're on the eastbound side of the highway. It's divided highway, three lanes in each direction. Uh, tax lot one of block two, two zero three. And the site has about, I'm sorry, yes.
Think around the westbound side.
You're correct. It is the westbound side. Sorry about that. Looking at my notes and not the.
Problem with the gentleman behind you.
Thank you. Uh, we have about seven hundred feet of frontage along the highway. And you could see the geometry of site. It's outlined in red on this exhibit, which is, which is not part of the application package. You should probably enter it as an exhibit.
Yes, let's mark it A1.
The exhibit is uh, an aerial rendering of the site and its surroundings. And it shows the lot lines overlaid on those, uh, on the aerial mapping. Uh, and also labeling some of the roads in the area and, and uh, lots surrounding the site.
Hey, Mr. Melee, it's prepared by your office?
That's correct.
And just what's the date of that?
It's dated today, uh, it's November seventh. It's November seventh, two thousand twenty-three.
So you can see the geometry of the site outlined in red here, very long and narrow as, as was described earlier. Seven hundred feet of frontage along the highway, but the depth is obviously ve- very shallow. And it's surrounded in the back by a large parking lot, obviously the frontage of Route forty-six. And the remainder of the site, uh, where the, where the building is, is on the easternmost part of the site. And there are two other existing buildings on the site as well. One, a tattoo parlor and one, a hurt, a rental, our rental facility. So the site is located in the, the B two zone. And the total area, I think I mentioned, is just over one acre. Um, site again is fully developed, three, three buildings on the site and the remainder of the site. Uh, contains paved areas and parking and driveways and such. Um, this site also has a good amount of grade change from, from back to front. It slopes down. Quite a bit, I'd say about twenty feet from the rear to the, uh, to the highway. And there are some retaining walls throughout the site, uh, one of which is along the frontage of Route forty-six. And then there's one on, uh, on the edge of where we plan to put some proposed parking. There's also another retaining wall there. And along the rear line as well, there's a pretty large retaining wall. And also, as was mentioned earlier, there's a seven foot high board on board fence that. Uh, goes along the whole back line of this, of this lot. But it's off of our site by a good five feet or so, but it's in that wooded area beyond the site. So now we'll get into some of the proposed conditions and, and speaking to the existing building that is not changing an envelope or anything. It's just being reoccupied by this proposed use. But just some cosmetic changes to the building. The building footprint is uh, one thousand three hundred eighty-five square feet. The main entrance to the building is facing Route forty-six closer to the right side of the building. There is a, a back door entrance for deliveries that's facing the rear of the lot. Um, and that, that was shown on the architectural plan that you, uh, you were, you were displaying earlier. One of the requirements in the code is to provide the six foot high of fifty percent opaque fence along that rear line. And, you know, we are, we are providing that by way of the wall, the existing fence that's there, the board on board fence. And also the slope provides a pretty good buffer along that, that back line. So some of the circulatory or circulation type changes and improvements that we plan to make on the site. Uh, the, much of the site is going to be repaved. Uh, a good portion of the parking lot where, where the entrance area is, is already freshly paved.
These were great recommendations by Mr. Poplar. Anyone who's been on that site, I mean, there's the potential for disaster there. Someone misses the. If you miss the entrance on the eastward side and then try to go up and turn around and go up the hill. And I think the recommendations that we're a hundred percent for are great recommendations that are long overdue with the site.
Absolutely, yeah. It, it's very much an angled entrance and exit from the site. If you look at our site plans and I could, I should probably open up to a site. Uh, this is, yeah, this is one of the plans that was submitted as part of the site and application package. Yes, she created six. Dated. May eighth, two thousand twenty-three, with no revisions required by Mid-Atlantic. And this again shows the property boundary, very long narrow site, triangular shape. And what I was describing before was the entry off of Route forty-six and the exit, which you can see is on a very acute angle. Yes, that's purely because of the geometry of the site. Uh, the driveway cuts across the front of the building, building situated in the middle area, here we're all pointing. And we're proposing parking on either side of the building wherever we can accommodate parking spaces. We do have one ADA space that would be required by, based on the number of spaces that we're proposing. Uh, seven spaces in the rear and another seven spaces uh, on the other side, which is supposed to be the front entrance. And we do have a loading area that, that is not included in those parking space counts. Just for deliveries for the, uh, for the cannabis facility right next to that rear entrance.
So on issue of parking, so you know, in my opinion, the, the parking's the same on this, whether it's class, you know, one, two, three, four, six. But really the parking here for a class two operation shouldn't suck. I think really, you know, one per, one base for every one hundred two feet would be something more individual larger manufacturing facility. But the fact of the saying, we do comply with fourteen parking spaces.
Yes, and we do comply and, and speaking internally, fourteen spaces would never, never be utilized.
Under fourteen hundred square feet.
Right, right.
Wow.
Fourteen spaces, so just for that one building and correct the other guys over.
Just for that one, correct. So beyond where the retaining wall is situated, basically in the center of the site. And where we're proposing parking, there, there are no improvements beyond that. That's essentially somewhat of a different development, although on the same lot. Part of that same development. One of the things that were, were, was alluded to earlier were the comments from, from your planning board engineer. With respect to circulation and the suggestion to uh, basically delineate this as a one way in and a one way out. Which, which is, is a pretty um. Good comment because that's essentially, you wouldn't be able to make a right hand, very hard to maneuver. And make a right hand out of the site here or certainly a left kind of the site. From here or trying to get into the site from, from that back entrance. So the main en, the first entrance going from east to west of the site. Uh, would be a one way in and then you'd have a one way out uh, in the middle of the site. But there's also an entrance in that same driveway. So there is a two-way in the center driveway. And then that's a two-way on the last driveway towards the end that we're not modifying at all and uh, uh, doing any improvements close to that.
As you're going up the hill on the western side, there would be a do not enter there. So someone would know, they can enter there to get to the tattoo parlor, former tattoo parlor where the enterprise. Enter that way. I think that's, that's been that way and it's appropriate, but they would not get, go around and go up it.
Yeah, what we would suggest is to put a do not enter sign to prevent people from coming in this way. And also a no left turn as you're exiting this, such that you wouldn't make a left turn on Route forty-six going, going in the wrong direction. Uh, but this would be a one way and we would, we would put a painted arrow on the entrance area and also a painted arrow on the exit portion of the site.
Yes, one other consideration, um, and kind of outlined, I would say here, that center driveway. Not to allow cars to exit that driveway, because you're gonna have a potential conflicting movement of a car coming down from your facility. Crossing over uh, to exit the site for a car entering. So it's not a consideration, you know, take a look, it, just make that center um, access drive and entrance and just direct. The most east side and, and enter the pride for the most westerly driveway. And have that at the exit for.
Just writing a better comment, you were saying, have all, everyone entered from here, including the other businesses?
No, 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 just.
He wants you to exit. Is that what we have proposed?
No, uh, we, we, right now, if it's allowed and it functions until you can exit here and enter. Well, you have a crossover, but you'd have the same situation here where you would still cross over.
Right, I did find that um, no left turn signs that were laying on the ground. To me, the, the location of it kind of indicated that it wasn't enabling the car to exit that center.
Yeah.
I don't know, I haven't seen it ever since I planned, I can't confirm that, but again, I think it'd be a safer, safer, uh. Lesser technical conflicts in that center driveway, if we just directed everyone down to that most westerly.
Recommendation, is there any of trouble there?
No, and I think the driveway is connected, it, it could be done.
That's sounding a good recommendation.
You'd still, uh, to exit, you'd still be crossing across that driveway. So you'd run the risk of somebody coming in, your gloves in that driveway, but you're not sitting there with the vehicle waiting for exit as another vehicle's potentially coming in. So uh, we could, we could sign it appropriately. And I think a stop sign here would, would make sense as well. They'll both stop before they actually proceed through that apron area.
If I can just ask you, Mike, so in terms of your technical comment number two. What we're talking about here on the record, how does that compare to what you have in technical comment? Is that the same or is that different?
Oh, well, as I described and appear that they agree to, would be to direct. The traffic exiting the, the enterprise facility down to the most westerly driveway to exit. So consistent with my.
Okay.
But one other topic that was brought up was with respect to trash and the, uh, and the dumpster and the accommodations that are out there today. Uh, there was at one time a loose dumpster that was situated in the paved area of the site closer to the entrance of the development. Uh, no longer there, I think it's been removed, but that was there to accommodate the former Liberty Travel facility. We've agreed to, uh, as, as based on the suggestion of your board engineer to provide trash enclosure. Such that at least it provides some screening for the dumpster. Either a board on board fence or sort of chain link screening type fencing around the trash enclosure. I don't believe there are any ordinance requirements for the type of materials or anything on the trash enclosure. But we do want to provide, or we're willing to provide a trash enclosure for that dumpster there. Although you've heard testimony about the amount of tra, of trash that would be generated from this type of facilities is very minimal. Uh, finally, I'll get into signs with respect to the signs that are out there. There is one freestanding sign as you went through the site. Uh, you can see it here identified uh, towards the right hand side of the plan. Uh, it's not a lit sign, it's not externally or internally lit. It's just a freestanding sign that's there. We plan to reutilize that same sign. Next would be another freestanding sign that's in the middle area of the site. And that's um, basically on the top of slope, if you're familiar with the, the facility, you have that con wall and that, that top area. In the middle of this driveway, it's horseshoe shaped driveway that's situated there. On that freestanding sign, there are actually two large signs mounted on those, on those poles. We're, we're, we're going to take off the lower sign that talks about, I think, hours of operation or something of that nature, which is a pretty large sign. That's being removed. The upper most sign is going to remain, and I think you've seen some, some.
I don't think they can actually. I'm gonna enter two items as an exhibit.
One, do we have the measurements of the sign? Are they in compliance with?
Yeah, don't forget the measurements, they, they, they are the same exact size, they're the same, they're just being pre-paved, but the same exact size.
I have, I have something.
I just need to know if they're compliant, the one you're taking in.
Yeah, as far as the area and heights, uh, I was not able to find any requirements in terms of area heights and such for pylon signs.
Do you look at our sign?
I think it's not permitted in the B two zone. We have monument signs uh, that are permitted and um, we did talk about that in our report about. Um, requiring a C variance.
So it's all basically overall that's, these types of signs are not permitted in their entirety, in their entirety. But they are existing on the site today and we're actually reducing the number of signs from what's out there today. Like I said, removing that and the one sign I should, I should put up there.
Let me, let me hand out the, this is currently in the lab. Trying to enter this, this is a, a photograph from Google dated October two thousand twenty-one showing the facade of the building. Why don't we mark that as A two? And A three is a concept plan for the new site.
And I could mark this also because. And I could mark this also because this is a different photo of the same.
So we have four photographs, I mean, there was a mark that says A four.
So A four. Okay, so, right, A four, four photographs, did you take the photographs? Okay, so it was taken under your direction, when were they taken? Today, and they fairly inaccurately depict the conditions on the site when they were taken today, okay.
So actually, the the upper left corner of the uh of the of the plan shows. That one large pylon sign that I was describing earlier at the top of the rock wall that along the highway. Uh, the the lower sign, which is quite big, that says open seven days would be removed, so that sign is is being taken off the site. The upper sign would remain, ob- obviously modified to to accommodate the new, the new tenants there. There's also a uh wall map that signs, so the back of this same, uh, we have to enter this as an exhibit also since in the back of.
Sure, yeah.
Also. Four photos of the areas of the site taken by.
Same thing taken today, fairly accurate conditions on the site, correct?
Yes. So on, on the upper right side of this plan, you can see the wall map and sign that's situated above the roof line of the existing building. That also is being, so there will be no sign there for this proposed.
We don't really, we don't have the procedural history of how these signs. They, they, they are pre-existing for decades, um, you know, there was nothing, no, no resolution or. I'm sure it existed at some point, we don't have copies of them, but we're, you know, of course, we're eliminating the signs and I think your plan is correct in that. We will respectfully request a C variance for the signs that were proposed.
Uh, but that was before I got this exhibit, which has a third party sign. And I'm, I did, that's not what I reviewed, we, you know, it um, we actually said that if you were to replace the Liberty. Uh, travel sign with the address, because you can't display the business as, as you know, it's um one of the conditional use. Um, you would require C variance because the ordinance basically says that. Um, in section three eighty-one fifty-seven, that any existing sign. Um, that is legally erected and maintained may continue to exist with the existing business. At its present location, but shall not be altered. So if you were to change it, it's, you're altering the sign, sign, which would require C variance. But you're putting in a third, I mean, I, I, this looks like a third party to me. Um, I, I leave it to the board and our council, so I didn't get a chance to review this.
I, I, I didn't keep track, is this H?
Yes.
Are you referring to H?
I, I am referring to H.
Put that fall under billboard?
I mean, my, when I look at it, my most conservative and the is, is that it looks more like a billboard than. Even, even if it is the American flag and God bless America, it's, you know, it would still, I would. Uh, put that in the billboard category than a sign related to this business.
Because the applicant does not want to advertise what they do in any way, shape, or form, like they would be able to comply. It said, leave enterprises and there will be no objective or code if they add a very flag on it as perfectly allowed.
There should be more of a billboard, that that's a very large sign.
It's the same, it's the exact same sign as the Liberty Travel, it's the same title, they're just making the facing of Liberty Travel. They're placing it with this, and I definitely didn't want to get dogged down with this. They definitely want to be pressed and they thought this is a nice message to put on. This is the tailback of the dog, the board doesn't want to hear more about this.
I was, I was, I don't know, the board, we didn't get to see this before, so.
And it's a non-digital sign, it's the exact same sign as there, take off the handle and put on, God bless.
Will it be lit?
It apparently is, it is lit. They're not, it's not a digital. And should the board receive things, you would agree to this, the applicant spit away that he would not change the messaging, if he did, he would have to come back.
The address is actually past the first entrance.
So there will be, the the other sign that is shown on the clip of the exhibit, the small sign, the most easternly side. That currently just says when we travel, that will now say six hundred Route forty-six. Same sign, that is not moving to that sign, there may be something uh lighting shining on it. But that, that will be, the same sign will be maintained, painted and it does happen.
You don't have the dimensions of the sign, oh, it has the same.
Yeah, they're the same, they're the same, the entrance sign, this Liberty Travel sign at the entrance is eight by there.
And that's gonna be A two sign?
I'm sorry?
That will be A two sign?
Uh, no, it's, it's not as big as the A two uh sign, this is, this is eight foot wide by six feet tall. And twelve feet in total height from the ground. The larger, the larger Liberty Travel sign, the upper side, is fourteen wide by six high. About seventeen feet from the ground. In all pre-existing, it's a, it's a, it's a box sign internally lit box sign. And that's what we would propose as well. We also should mention that the the wall signs, the window signs that are existing on the building, we also give it to the cell. We, we, removing the wall, the window signs, the one large roof line sign or wall sign. And the lower of the two uh sign that are on the pylon sign, uh, several. And there is, there is actually something in this conditional use, the code under seventy that says, while no banners or flags of the business are permitted. Uh, that however, one American flag um is permitted. This is not, not hanging American flag, but the concept is this.
I love you, yeah.
Have we considered removing the sign?
Removing what?
Have we considered removing the sign? They, they need to have their address somewhere. Not, not, not the small one, I'm sorry, the one that's in front of the building, the larger sign. It's a, it's a, I, you know, we have the order here as well, it's a pre-existing sign.
We, we can't hear you, you want to step up?
In, in what respect do you mean removing the sign? Do you simply mean removing the Liberty Travel sign and putting up something blank or taking down that giant tower? Uh, that I would be completely diverse, that's, that's a big expense and I.
I hope he gets the permission under his, I want to get to the technicals of the lease.
Yeah, I don't feel like that's a call.
We need to do that in the lease.
But I'm open to moving the Liberty Travel and just putting up something.
Yeah, I mean, the original, what was permitted, and I'm sorry for putting this on you in the last, it's something that, something that came up again. And the applicant, uh, and you can speak to it, you feel strongly that this is a nice message, but I don't want to get bogged down on this. We can simply put the address on there and that would be compliant with.
Can I agree with those here?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
It's not, it's not a sticking point, it's something nice I'd like to have, but it's, no, it's not.
I'm not saying we won't necessarily do it, we, we need to think about it. Here it is.
Understood.
Board have any thoughts on this? I like play for playful. But I agree. You have other thoughts? All right, so model. Counselor, do we even have the ability to go forward to discuss moving the eagle? Or can we simply ask the applicant if you would uh. Work with what we're requesting just like.
Yeah, the applicant, as you heard, is, is willing to just put the address there and take off the whole thing, he would like to have the flag. Um, you're not tied to the eagle, but uh, if you can keep the flag with the message, that would be great.
Any objections to that? All right, I think we have a.
Okay, I'll proceed then, uh, I'll touch, surely, I'll, I'll touch on lighting.
Your problem is coming about the uh size of the.
Uh, I'll touch on lighting at this point, the, the site currently does not have any site lighting, there is no poles or or. Uh, wall packs that extend uh light levels throughout the parking lot areas. There are a couple of soffit lights around the building, basically around the, the roof line of the building, and those will remain. But our application proposes to install two, two uh wall packs on either side of the building. That would throw light on either side towards the parking area. To provide some, a little better level of lighting in the parking lot area. We, we did a study, as was suggested by your engineer, to see how much light that we're, we'd be able to put. Uh, the, the, the challenge is that this, this building is so short. That putting a wall pack at the very top of the building, you're still only ten or eleven feet high, and you're not going to throw light. You know, sixty feet away or eighty feet away, so the light levels do drop off probably halfway through the site. Uh, but you'll have the area where the entrances are on either side and the area closest to the building very well lit. And we could provide a, a, a uh plan that could demonstrate that. Other than that, there are, there are some uh lights that are on the existing utility poles along Route forty-six. I know that there's a overhead by the entrance, overhead light fixture, and there's a floodlight by the exit that throws light onto our site. Both of those lights are directed towards our site, we didn't go out there and do the light level survey. But I'm sure that showed, that provides some level of light uh on the site.
Any other comments, I mean, I'm trying to go through them all, but there's some, we're creating the ball, we're moving the dead tree, repairing the older wall and the concrete block wall. Uh, re-landscaping in the grass and selling area, uh, confirming that the existing soffit lighting is working.
You say refurbishing the wall, they're, that's getting up the wall, correct?
Talked about the fencing, we're in the dumpster area, breathe that, guardrails.
Well, we are providing guardrail, uh, just because we think it's a um. Uh, a level of safety that we want to provide for the parking area up here. Because of the wall and because of the slope, so we are proposing guiderail on areas where there's a retaining wall that's over three feet.
Providing some improvements, uh, for some reason. Blessed the landlord while he's here tonight feels magnetic miss and wants to do so, but I won't.
Has the property owner agreed to this? He has. Other than that, the, the uh review letter touches on utilities as well, which we could certainly provide, and we'll serve letter for water. And as far as sewer, we think we're going to be under the existing flows that are there today. Existing office type use and enough based on the use that we're proposing will be within that same, that's.
So there's no available water that's used in the uh manufacturing process?
Oh, as far as the, yeah.
And there was a wire that was on site.
Oh, correct, yes.
They have been sans reported, a guy wire that we found was identified Verizon.
Correct, yes, there's a Verizon utility pole from which that guy wire extends and, and strangely enough, that guy wire. Extends into the area where we would be paving the site right in the middle, and obviously that would have to be removed. And fortunately, uh, a client actually reached out to Verizon and was able to get a hold of them and, and they're willing to cooperate and remove that guy wire.
Cooperate to remove the guide wire that they installed and blocking, that's, that's very nice to me.
I guess it bears that it wasn't blocking anything.
At the time, yeah.
I, I have one other uh, uh, page, I don't know. It's on page nine, number six, um, just confirmation or clarification, there's a thirteen by twenty loading area. It appears from the site plan and so there's one of the parking spaces, is, is that correct? And, and just if you could say how it can be managed um to not have conflict between the loading needs. Um, of the proposed use.
Yes, it has a few requirements, that these are, you know, small vehicles that we call in, in very, very small trucks that are.
And I think it's, I think it's um something that's hard to pick up on our plans because the parking, there's one space that maybe you didn't see. That's oriented the other way over here, so there are seven spaces. Seven parking spaces and a loading space that separate from that, so there, there's a separate loading space accommodated without the interference of parking.
I know you touched on it, but how will the uh eagle, sorry, the American flag sign be lit?
That's an internally lit sign today and that would remain that way. It looks, when you, when you see the rendering, it appears to be like an LED type sign. When you see a flag kind of waving, you think it's moving, but that's not the case, that would just be a stagnant image that would. Be internally lit like a box sign, um, as, as it is today.
Twenty-four hour?
No, I don't think we, I don't think. Actually, on, on Route forty-six, I think you can leave a sign on uh twenty-four hours.
We've had that discussion before, we'd have to look into, I don't.
I think we'll just comply.
I, I know they had to be turned off by one AM or something like that, I'm not sure how that applies.
Yeah, the applicant would comply, if there is something in your.
As far as hours of operation of the lighting for the signs will comply.
Um, Mike, over ours or esteemed engineer, do you have any questions or comments with your report?
Well, just one more comment, um, it's my comment number twelve. For the owner and the applicant. During my site visit, um, I noticed a significant number of cars is parked around the uh tattoo parlor. Relocated, so. Okay, I haven't had an opportunity to.
We gotta swear a minute, if he's gonna, if you're gonna address him.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, you're, I'm happy to do that, but there, there were, as noted in the pictures, there were some tractor trailers that were there, they've all been moved as plates. With the crowd site and, uh, you know, we can say that we'll have to handle where it's removed and, uh, vehicles that are being parked there. Not associating with any businesses that operate.
I have a question, uh, for our counsel section here. Discolored, in, in regards to this alcove, um, would you consider that entrance a side entrance or a rear entrance?
From, from the building standpoint, it would be rear entrance.
So, getting, getting into that alcove is not on the side of the building?
Getting into the alcove would be on the side.
So the delivery would entrance is trying to.
Side of the alcove and the rear of the building.
Well, I think the intent is for deliveries to occur in the rear just to prevent it from being, from occurring right in plain view from the street, correct? And you have, you, you definitely meet the letter of the law here where you have an opening in the building on the side, on the very rear of the side. But the actual door to get into the building now, I'm pointing, I'm pointing to the architectural floor plan here. The actual door to get into the facility is facing the rear. So it's, it's, you're walking into an area that's at the rear side. But then you're entering the building in the rear and that door is about sixteen wide. The whole alcove area, that was a question earlier, is about ten feet, I can see a dimension here, five out and four feet. Uh, along the side.
Can you pull a vehicle inside that help?
Oh, I, maybe a bicycle, I'm not, not.
So we're never interested in the loading zone, so I'm trying to find where it is in the code, so seven.
It does seven.
It does call it a loading area. Seven, and all deliveries with chemicals related product will be made through the tier entrance of the building, so. You can make a heck of an argument, and we spent time as the door, the engineer and I before him, before we engineered this, we struck, we're near the scene, it was possible. And, you know, we looked at that and made the determination from our standpoint. That we believe that that is the rear edge, that, that is a rear entrance to the building, there, there's an open air alcove. But the actual entrance to the building comes.
And actually, my le- uh, my review also, I thought it's that, that it's the letter of the law, that the entrance is through the rear.
It's a, it, it isn't secure. This is open. There's over there that, that's, we're making structural changes, but the building will allow.
Is there, is there overhead coverage there?
Yes, yeah, there's overhead coverage, but it, but it's, but it's over. I guess it becomes less emphatic now that we're for the, for the adjustment and not the twenty-four. This was, was one of the real sticking points, trying to meet all the conditions. As you can see, we have some other technical variances. We're here seeking that at the board. We don't believe that that's something that we need to ask for, but if we're deals that we do, then we would have to.
So we don't feel like that alcove is part of the building?
We don't in the word plan.
Is that correct professionals? We don't feel like the alcove is part of the building?
Like I said, the alcove is an open structure, but the actual entry of all the um, equipment, um, if you will, will come from the rear entrance. Like I said in the review letter, it means the letter, letter of the law.
Well, there's two doors, right? We have a front door and a back door. I think if, if, if it was one of the plans, was we didn't think we even have the room, because this is so close to the mountain, you know, that we would do, and there was no way to do, we talked about getting an easement from Shazuki, and that didn't work. And then we came up with the, uh, Irish structural engineer to see if we can come up with this alcove, and you still owe the size of the alcove, but uh, that we believe that we have a front door for, um, you know, non-campus related items, and that we have a back door, albeit there's an open alcove. So I, I understand your point, splitting hairs.
And if the concern is visibility, which, which, that's what the, that's what the rule is for, what the ordinance is for. You could see on this lower right-hand corner, that, that back corner of the building, that is against the flow and that, that um, board-on-board, solid board-on-board fence that's along that back line, that it almost looks like it, as, as if it's our fence, but it's actually off of our property by a few feet. But it does run that line and provides an excellent uh, screen along that, that edge.
Yeah, it was back there in this part, uh, new vehicles, bless.
So you're essentially taking off that corner of that building right there?
Exactly. Now, the longer way to the side of the alcove?
Uh, did I say that before?
Yeah.
Have it, it's on the architectural plan, not, not prepared by us, but it, it is to mention that it's nine foot eight in width along the rear and four foot ten uh, along that side, so that the two dimensions, nine, eight by four.
Thank you. No further questions of the engineer.
Does the board have any questions to the engineer?
Just more for our engineer. Uh, I understand what you said about the ingress and egress. For me, we rental car would have a lot more cars coming in and out. Are we exacerbating that problem by having these cars go down, down to use that exit instead of having that middle exit?
All the traffic would be directed to exit the site at that post-westerly located. Uh, a- and again, you know, um, try to avoid conflicts at that center island, which I think a car exiting from that.
If they can't enter and just exit there, the center one.
Uh, well, then I think you're uh, be impacting the ingress for the rental car facility. And, and again, I, I found the sign laying on the ground that was at the bottom of the uh, access drive serving the travel, liberty travel, that said no left turn. I'm thinking that might have indicated, you know, make a left turn to exit at that center driveway, based on the location. I haven't seen a, the actual traffic uh, control plant from the original site, but based on its location, that's what my interpretation of it was.
Any additional questions? Very well, then. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Yeah, what is, we're going to testify in the area of professional, I mean, it's uh, Matt Flynn from.
When you swear from the testimony about the, before this board is going to be the truth all through the.
I do.
Okay, just for the record, spell your last name and give us your business address.
Sure, Matthew Flynn, F L Y N N, business address is one zero one Gibraltar Drive, Morris Plains, New Jersey.
But you've been qualified with this board before, but please give them uh, your educational professional experience.
Sure, my education comes from Rutgers. I have my master's degree in planning and public policy from the Rutgers Blaustein School. I have my professional planner's license in the state of New Jersey, as well as my AICP license, which is the national uh, licensure for planners. Uh, testified before this board, as John mentioned, and a dozen of other boards across the state.
License, correct?
They are.
You offer Matt as an expert in the area.
Excepted.
Thank you. Hey, Matt, we've uh, come to a purple day tonight, so we have some uh, variants for signage, but uh, we've really got questions that the fourth man went through, in terms of the D three variances, as well, uh, the previous conditions, the C variances, and now let's sign the variances.
Sure, uh, as Mr. Vetery mentioned, the main reason, or the reason that we are before the zoning board tonight and not the planning board is because we are requesting some D three conditional use uh, variances. Um, we are in the B two business district where the proposed use is a uh, conditional use. And because of the unique shape and the uh, existing layout and existing development that's out there today, um, we are requesting some uh, D three conditional use deviations. Um, and just to take a step back, basically the difference between a conditional use variance and a use variance is that we are not required to meet that enhanced burden of proof, um, basically to prove that the site is particularly suitable for this use. Um, that's uh, caked into the ordinance that this use is um, permitted here so long as we meet certain conditions. Uh, so to jump right into the, the planning testimony for those uh, variances here, um, first of which would be the front yard landscaping. Um, landscaping is required for the entirety of the required fifty-foot front yard setback. Um, here, uh, like Mr. Vetery mentioned, we are looking at a lot that has a depth of under seventy feet. Um, so by virtue of that exceptional narrowness of the, of the property itself, um, not only can we not meet the front yard setback, but obviously, um, we would not be able to meet that front yard landscaping um, for that same reason. Um, likewise, and this isn't a conditional, this is not a conditional use uh, variance. There's also a twenty-foot rear yard setback. So with twenty feet, uh, fifty feet in the front, twenty feet in the back, obviously this, this site um, as it is lawfully existing, uh, is not conducive to, to those requirements. Um, the next D three variant would be for parking location. Um, we do have park, parking located along the rear property line. Again, this is uh, a result of the existing layout of the property. Again, this is a retrofit and adaptive reuse of the um, existing development that's out there today. Um, and we are, in order to get that required parking, we are putting that, um, where we can uh, put it. And there is, um, just to the extent that we are posing some rear yard, um, uh, parking there. Um, there is that built-in buffer, um, and if we look at uh, the, what should I call this? The cover sheet of the engineering plan, um, we do see this built-in buffer of that used car lot that's behind us. So even though we do have parking right there. New car. Uh, we, it's basically parking against parking, and to the extent that the uh, intent of that is to limit um, uh, any impact to our neighbors, we do have residential beyond that, but again, that's buffered by that parking lot behind us. Finally, the last of the three uh, D three conditional use variances is quote-unquote, display of cannabis from your planner's report. That's um, what, what is called in the ordinance. Again, this is not, there's going to be no plants uh, coming in or out of this facility. Um, and really, it's a little bit of a misnomer. Uh, it's really a, a fencing variance. Um, and that's, again, because we don't have that fencing to the rear of the property. But again, there is fencing there, and it's just along the, that uh, new car lot property and not along ours. So, um, just to get into the planning rationale, basically, this board is accustomed to the, the uh, typical positive-negative criteria. Um, in terms of the positives, the project benefits, this is a permitted uh, conditional use. Um, the positive criteria are presumptively met, just um, that we have to focus our attention on those conditions that we don't uh, meet here. Um, the site can be adequately parked. It's a relatively low water slash sewer demand, and it's running on a major highway with great accessibility. Again, we heard that this is a relatively low intensity land use. Um, all of that, I think, speaks to the fact that this, that this is a good fit for this site, um, which is what I'll call an awkward size and shape. Um, this is an adaptive reuse of a vacant building, so the mass and scale of the existing development will remain um, as it is. And again, we are reducing some of the, the sign clutter that's out there today, which I think is also a benefit. All of the above promote purposes of the municipal, municipal land use law, including purpose A, promotion of the general welfare, purpose G, variety of uses in appropriate locations, purpose I, desirable visual environment, and purpose M, efficient use of land. Uh, the flip side to that is the negative criteria, which I think is the, is the heart of the uh, D three test. Uh, none of the conditions that we are uh, seeking relief from are relative to the operations of the site. Um, they're relative to, to the site itself and, and relative to the existing development that's out there today that we're seeking to, to work with. Um, like I said, that front setback would be needed for any land use. Uh, fifty feet front setback is required for any permitted use here. Um, there are twelve conditions that pertain to cannabis. We only need relief from three of them, and again, those three are relative to, to a, a unique conditions of the property. Um, I think enough has been said by the site engineer and the, and the operations to, to speak to the, to the negative criteria. Um, so that takes us to the C relief. Um, the only C relief that we're requesting is sign type, um, that freestanding sign, which again, has been well vetted at this point. Um, and again, it's a reduction of the four signs that are out there today. Um, minimum parking dimensions and curb cuts. Uh, I think that the, the low intensity nature of the property and the, the I'll call few deliveries, few cars coming in and out. I think that the site will operate safely and efficiently. Um, and then there is that variance for the quote-unquote uh, flag sign, which again, has been well vetted. Um, all of the above can be uh, justified by virtue of the C two balancing test, where by the benefits of the application as a whole substantially outweigh any detriment. Um, all the benefits from the D three test carry forth. Uh, all C relief is necessary to effectuate this beneficial project. Um, and in terms of the negative criteria, none of the relief will result in um, substantial detriment to the public or to the zone plan. Again, this is a unique property that is well buffered from residential. Um, and all the relief is, is relative to the fact that we are pretty much keeping what's out there today. Uh, so having said all that, I think uh, this is a, a appropriate project, given the site constraints, and uh, I'm here for any questions.
Uh, Son, are we doing this E three for fumes since there are none?
No, it doesn't, uh, no. Uh, the D three, like he's, uh, like, um, uh, John and the batter said, it's only for existing conditions. So, um, I don't believe there, there's a D three for fumes, and it was testified that there will be no fumes.
Thank you. Counselor, you agree with the, all the variances submitted or presented here?
I do, Mr. Jim.
Okay, any questions to the board or the planner?
One for us.
I think this is A two.
Yes, yes.
You see, I, I, I understand you have a fifty foot, but we leaving all these weeds here or?
No, that's all, that's all going to be re-landscaped, new sign, new landscaping.
You are being assisted.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, that is.
Yeah, in addition to that, the back wall, the painting of the building, you know, all the debris that's in the back is, is substantial of that. Speaking of this in my summary, but uh, yeah, there's substantial visible improvement that we may decide.
I have a question for the, the attorney. Uh, Rich, um, if an application, or not an application, but if a tenant comes along, um, after this, uh, their business is booming and they move to a larger one. Um, and there's a new tenant there that meets the same criteria as a manufacturing, cannabis manufacturing uh, company. Uh, will they have to come uh, in front of the board again, assuming that they're the same class of business?
Yes, I would say they have to come back to the board. They would, right.
They have to come back to the board, right? They're only allowed one.
They'd have to get their.
Of either type.
Right, but I have to, if we're approving this site for this use, uh, does it, does it have to be readdressed?
Yes.
Even though.
And under, it's a good question. Under the township ordinance, they have to apply for the license as a precursor, and then as part of that, it's a condition to come back to the board at sea site, I mean, because their operation may differ slightly in whether.
It could be a grow facility or whatever.
Yeah, no, they, they would be required to come back to this place.
Thank you.
All right, uh.
Once you landscape, who, who require to maintain? The owner or the?
That is a good question. I did not track the lease, but I, I'm not sure. Jason, you know, I, I don't know if you're, Jason pointing to himself, so.
The tech, they will be responsible for maintaining.
Just a quick question. Since this is the same lot and I guess, what do they call it, lot and it's structured, whatever, lot and what's block?
Yeah, block and lot.
How does these variances affect the other stuff on the property, either positively or negatively? Like, if we do it for this group, does it cascade to the other businesses?
There's no impact to the other businesses.
Okay, so none of these changes are going to affect them one way or another?
I don't believe so, no.
I mean, I would say there's a, there is, there's a positive in that, you know, when liberty travel was active, it was always limited parking. Because this code, as I've, you know, spoke about before, requires one parking space for every one hundred, typically of one space for every two hundred or fifty in the C D zone, but in this case, you know, they're saying one for one. I personally think that's because they blanketed with the, with the growing, um, and the other class manufacturers. So there would, I think, be a benefit with that, would be for some of the parks in there and then walk up the hill with.
I'd like to ask our planner, Son, if you have any questions or comments?
No, I'm, no, I don't.
All right, thank you. Uh, just one more. Sure.
Uh, in regards to my comment number thirteen, regarding sand per sewer, I understand the site is served by a on-site uh, septic system. So I think in lieu of that comment, uh, I believe in a important uh, review or approval may be necessary for the septic.
Uh, that would make sense. I was aware that, that this is uh, this is septic and, you know, for developing people on. If there's not a way to look out into the sand, cheers.
Is there a plan for the property have a plan?
I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman, but we'll look into that, uh, condition of approval, and um, if there is a septic, I get, uh, the applicant will save on a sort of connection fee. Yeah. You'll probably have some other fees.
Yes, they.
And we'll, we'll look into that.
You think it's septic, Lou?
That's what I've been told.
Really?
Yes, I was surprised.
Yeah, they're out there with the, they're still septic.
Good job. How many signs are we ending up with now?
Two, because the, the existing sign and the east side, the pre-entrance sign that currently says the big travel, that will just be the same sign, rebadged, have just the address. And I want a sign up at the hill. Even the bottom side is, that's that open Saturday gate, that would be removed. And sign where it says, but we have, we taken off and replaced with six hundred Route forty-six with the America's flag, no people. And the applicant has agreed to the resolution. They will uh, change the message, you know, and put it back.
Can we continue the meeting? Then we will continue the meeting, uh, open it to the public at this time. May have a motion to open the meeting up to the public for questions or comments of all of the testimony that we have heard here tonight.
Make motion.
Second. Opening the meeting. Um, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The meeting is opened up in the public. Anyone wishing to address the board, please come up to the podium. We have like a thirty-second wait. The bell would be good. No members of the public coming forward. I close the meeting for the public. Um, you want to summarize this?
Sure, and I'll keep it, um, you know, I'll keep it brief as we, but Mr. Gator stole my thunder a little bit about asking a lot about the physical improvements to the site. Um, Um, and I think that's, um, something we didn't maybe touch on enough, and I've spent a lot of time talking about this, uh, very clean operation. And we look at what the other uses here are, and we've seen some, uh, you know, lots of change in that where the tattoo parlor is from various uses that have come in and out. I think this is a very, very stable use, very heavily regulated with very professional operators that, um, are going to run a business. There are, that financial benefit to the township that we're, we're not mentioning here, but I guess they are mentioning here. Um, that, uh, are helpful as part of, uh, you know, this very first applicant that is, um, you know, looking to, you know, operate a class two operation. We've, um, you know, we've heard about some improvements to the site circulation, to the physicality of the building, to the landscaping, to the paving, to the signage, moving of signage. So I see lots of improvement here. Um, we've, uh, heard testimony from the professional engineer. And we've heard testimony that, um, I, I think really sells it at the end from the planner in terms of, you know, what's permitted in this zone. And, you know, what could have, um, what could have gone there that may not have even had to go before the board. This had the opportunity for the board to give all these good comments, and the applicant, um, has agreed to them. And for those reasons, I hope the board sees fit to approve the application, and we thank you for all your time and consideration and to the professionals as well.
Thank you for our first cannabis application. We had an evening with nothing but cannabis, son. I never thought I'd see that happen. So that's a, that's a first for me. Um, any further questions or discussion from the board members? May I have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the application with the following, um, conditional use variances. And, uh, please, uh, interject, counselor, if I fail to mention them all. The applicant is asking for a front yard setback, um, for a variance for, uh, landscape requirements. For rear yard setback. Have variance to allow parking along the rear property line. And, uh, an exception for the requirement to install fencing along the rear property line. Also, a C variance for signage, as well as, I think I heard, parking dimensions.
Page five.
Did I get it?
You will get page five of the planner's report as the C variances.
All right, hold, hold on for a moment. Page four, are you going to page third, uh, five, Rick?
Page four has the three, the three D three variances.
Yes, this one. Don't just bring your own setback.
When you are landscaping.
Fencing.
Parking.
Yes, uh, fourteen parking spaces is compliant, the D three, um, fumes not required.
Not required. Sign for the sign, that's a C variance, uh, C variance for the dimension.
Mention that.
And, uh, C variance for the curb cut because, uh, it's exceeding thirty feet.
Oh, good. Yes, also for, uh, C variance for.
We have all of them all. We have all the.
Did I list them all?
You missed any?
That were requested.
We'll say it this way, the, the variances as defined in the sand's report and as indicated on the records. So that should cover everything.
I agree.
I have a motion, may I have a second?
Does that include the engineering force representing for, uh, circle of the, uh, driveway?
I would make that part of the response.
Yeah, I think that's part of all.
Right, right, compliance with the, the full representations made on the record. One second.
We have a second, any discussion for the board? Please, both the board.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Gator?
Yes.
Mr. Karash?
Yes.
Mr. Luke Daniano?
Yes.
Ms. Cataldo?
Yes.
Mr. Seber?
Yes.
Mr. Kilpatrick?
Chairman of the vote, she has the application as approved. Before you go, thank you. It's a good investment for the town, and you are certainly welcome.
Thanks, everyone.
Good luck.
All right, continuing on, any old business? Any new business? Approval bills, we don't ever receive any. May I have a motion for adjournment? Second?
Second.
Second, we are adjourned. Anybody know the board?